Rap, Mr. Kevin Bickford, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there any discussion? Okay. By raise of hands, please, for approval of this evening's agenda. All in favor? Okay, we have six affirmative votes. Motion carries. We'll move to the approval of the minutes. Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Are there any additions or corrections to the set of minutes of the closed session of September 1st? Hearing none, all those for approval, please raise your hand. Okay, we have six affirmative votes. That set of minutes is approved. Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the business meeting of September 1st, 2020? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All in favor of approval, raise your hand, please. We have six affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Thank you. At this time, we usually have public comment, but the public comment portion of the meeting this evening will not take place. However, the Board of Education encourages the public to submit their comments in writing Under Old Business this evening, we have two items. The first is consideration of the second reading of proposed changes to Policy AC Non-Discrimination Statement. Good evening, Mr. Marderano.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Michael. John Marderano, Chief Legal Counsel and Staff Liaise on to the Policy Committee. The agenda waiting before you this evening is the second reading of proposed changes to Policy AC Non-Discrimination Statement. The Policy Committee reviewed the proposed changes to Policy AC at its public work session on August 25th, 2020. The proposed changes are being recommended because of changes to Maryland law relating to protected classes and the recent changes to federal regulations, specifically Title IX. The Board approved the first reading of the proposed changes to Policy AC at its business meeting on September 1st, 2020. Following the approval of the first reading, a notice was placed on Board Docs and on the Washington County Public Schools website seeking public comment on the proposed changes. No public comments were received. Therefore, the Policy Committee recommends approval of the second reading of the proposed changes to Policy AC Non-Discrimination Statement.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to Policy AC entitled Non-Discrimination Statement.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any questions from Mr. Marderano or any discussion? Mrs. Fisher is Chair of the Policy Committee. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Just that there are several policies we've been working on that have some minor changes based on changes that have been made mostly to Title IX. This is obviously one of them.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, we'll move to the vote. The motion is to approve the second reading of proposed changes to Policy AC entitled Non-Discrimination Statement. All those in favor of approval? Okay, we have six affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, also under Old Business, we have the second reading of another policy, Proposed Changes to Policy DIG Capitalization Program/Limit.
Good evening, President Williams, board members, and Dr. Michael. Tonight, I bring you the second reading of proposed changes to Policy DIG, the Capitalization Program and Limit. The first reading was approved at your business meeting on September 1st, 2020. These changes increase the capitalization criteria for financial reporting purposes from $1,000 to $5,000 and increase the minimum useful life from one year to two years. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brandenburg, and good evening. I'm sorry I didn't introduce you. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to Policy DIG entitled Capitalization Program/Limit.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Are there any questions or any discussion regarding Mrs. Fisher's motion? Or the policy? Mrs. Fisher?
Again, the changes have been made primarily because of change in this case with the Washington County government, and it deals mostly with some of the values of the assets that need to be kept recorded and reconciled.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Anyone else have a question or a comment? Any discussion? Okay, the motion is to approve the second reading of proposed changes to Policy DIG entitled Capitalization Program/Limit. All those in favor of approval, raise your hand. We have six affirmative votes. Student member concurs. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brandenburg. We'll move to New Business. Our first item under New Business is the consent agenda for this evening, and we have Mr. Scott Bactel, Supervisor of Purchasing, presenting.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have three items for your review. These items were reviewed by our Purchasing Review Committee and are being recommended for approval. And staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bactel. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards, renewals, and procurements for Microsoft Premier Support Services renewal to Microsoft Corporation at a cost of $116,502. School buses renewal to American Bus Sales and Service at unit prices with an overall cost not to exceed $1,530,977. And playground equipment and installation to Playground Specialist, Inc. at a cost of $33,596. Metro Recreation at a cost of $35,077.79. And Cunningham Recreation at a cost of $71,282.9.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford, for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any questions for Mr. Bactel or any discussion? Mrs. Fisher?
I was just curious, do we know how many buses we're going to buy?
Right now, it's anticipated we're going to buy four, but that could change based on some of the contract bus routes, potentially turning them back in. So that's, this year, we weren't sure so, an exact number, so we put our, put four down, but with the option to buy more if needed.
Thank you.
Mr. Bickford?
And could you just go over the, with the item number three with the playground equipment, which schools will benefit and how we're paying for that?
So, taking glasses off so I can read up close. So, all three of those vendors have national bids that they were awarded. So basically, we compete those to get the best design for each of the schools. But it's Bestor Elementary, Hickory Elementary, Lincolnshire Elementary, Pangborn Elementary, and Ruth Ann Monroe Primary. And it's being funded by a grant, I'll have to get the name of the grant, the Pre-K Expansion Grant. So, that is, and the grant was for $150,000, so we used basically the entire grant allotment for the playgrounds for those schools.
Great, wonderful, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting on approval of tonight's consent agenda as read by Mr. Bickford. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we have six affirmative votes. Student member concurs. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bactel. Continuing under New Business, we have Mr. Brandenburg returning. Mr. Brandenburg is our Executive Director of Finance, and he'll be coming forward with the fourth quarter FY 2020 budget adjustments.
Good evening again. As you know, on a quarterly basis, we bring requests for budget transfers across state-defined categories. At year-end, these transfers align the budget with actual results, since MSD regulations require that no category may be overspent or underspent after final adjustments. These adjustments were reviewed by the Finance Committee on August 25th with approval to bring them forward to you at this time. The adjustments this quarter were highly affected by the COVID-19 closure and reflect significant savings in some areas and significant cost overruns in other areas. Savings were mostly in the areas of instructional salaries and related benefits, special education, student health, and transportation. Cost overruns were mostly in the areas of operation of plant and food services, plus we had additional facilities costs in maintenance and capital outlay. There are also other smaller adjustments as usual. Due to the disruption and uncertainty brought about by the pandemic, we did not bring or project third-quarter adjustments to the board. So the changes that we have here tonight are relative to the adjusted budget after the second quarter. The bottom line is an increase in fund balance for the year of $1.2 million, or about a third of 1%. Upon your approval, we will present these category transfers to the county commissioners. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions about the board's finances and budget adjustments on the document before you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandenburg. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the proposed FY 2020 fourth-quarter budget adjustments as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any questions for Mr. Brandenburg or any discussion?
Mrs. Williams, if I may, just to note again what Mr. Brandenburg just mentioned, this has the Washington County Public Schools budget for last year spent at 99.6%, 99.7% spent of the budget money. And, you know, a million dollars is a lot of money. We certainly look at that, and we want to make sure we do right by our taxpayers with that money. But I do want to make sure that people are aware, even though it's a very large number, it does reflect far less than 1% of our budget, far less than 1% of our budget. So this is cutting it very close to spending the entire budget for last year.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the proposed FY 2020 fourth-quarter budget adjustment as presented by Mr. Brandenburg. All those in favor? Okay, we have six votes. The student member concurring. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brandenburg. Our next item under consideration is the FY 2022 General Fund Operating Budget Calendar with our Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Jeffrey Prue, presenting. Good evening.
Good evening, Mrs. Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Staff has before you this evening the proposed budget calendar for fiscal year '22. The Finance Committee reviewed this document at its meeting on July 28th and did provide consent to move this calendar forward. I would like to highlight a couple of dates in the calendar for you, for your review and for the public's highlight. Really hard to believe that in the next three weeks, staff will be meeting individually with individual department heads to review priorities and schedules and program highlights for the coming year to make sure that those are incorporated into the superintendent's draft, which will be tentatively presented in a work session to the board on December 8th, so prior to the holiday break. Moving into the month of January, we usually receive preliminary revenue estimates from the state around the 20th, 19th, 20th, 21st. Around that time, we will then incorporate those revenue estimates in and provide a budgetary request to the county commissioners based on the superintendent's draft budget, as we have done in years past. There'll be a second work session of the board tentatively scheduled for February 2nd of '21 to review the budget again in light of the revenue projections we received from the state. A public hearing is scheduled for the first week of March, and a joint meeting for the middle of March of '21 with the county commissioners to review the budget with them, and a tentative, or excuse me, a planned adopted approval of the budget also in the middle of March after presenting the budget to the county commissioners. So, those are the highlights. This calendar reflects your normal schedule, and I'm happy to answer any questions or make any edits you wish.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the proposed FY 2022 budget calendar as a general guideline for development of the fiscal 2022 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any questions for Mr. Prue or any discussion? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the proposed FY 2022 budget calendar as a general guideline for development of the fiscal 2022 budget. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we have six affirmative votes with the student member concurring. Motion carries. Thank you. The final item under New Business this evening are the self-nominations for the Maryland Association of Board of Education Committee assignments. We have for the MAAB Budget Committee, Mr. Peter Bickford. For the Legislative Committee, Vice President Stan Stauffer, with Melissa Williams as alternate. And the Resolutions Committee, Melissa Williams. Those are the self-nominations. Is there a motion?
Mrs. Williams, I move to approve the self-nominations for MAAB Committee assignments as presented by President Williams, and the sending of a board endorsement of those nominations to MAAB.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any questions or any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the self-nominations for the MAAB Committee assignments as presented by me? Okay, we have six affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Thank you. And now for the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael?
Okay, thank you, President Williams. For the first part of our report tonight, Mr. Jacoby's going to come forward and share our annual discipline and suspension report. So, Mr. Jacoby?
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Michael. This evening, I'll present the annual discipline and suspension report. Washington County provides a tiered system of behavioral supports and interventions for all students. As you can see from this graphic, we start at the bottom with Tier One supports, which are offered to all students in the district. These are often referred to as universal supports. Our Tier Two supports are offered to some students in the district. These are very targeted supports that some students need in order to be successful. And we also have Tier Three supports. These are more intense supports that few of our students in the district need in order to be successful. So, I wanted to spend the first part of this presentation just going through some examples of Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three supports. So, Tier One supports, again, these are offered to all students. Many of these are preventative measures. We have, we start with the communication of the behavioral expectations to our students and to our parents. So often, this is done through the county handbook, the handbook that the schools have at the school level. Many of our schools host class meetings throughout the school year to help communicate behavioral expectations among students. Our teachers are in the classrooms communicating their classroom-level behavior expectations. And many of our schools are communicating social media. They're using social media to communicate expectations, especially at extracurricular activities. Classroom management, there's a lot of work done by our teachers with Tier One supports at the classroom level. Our teachers are providing students with rewards for positive behaviors. They're implementing within their classrooms routines and procedures for students to be successful, and they're managing student behaviors. Counselor lessons are provided to all students in the district. These are specific to social and emotional skill development. All of our schools have a school-wide positive behavior system that's in place. Specifically, 25 of our schools are using PBIS. So, last year, we had five new schools that began to utilize the PBIS support system. And this school year, 2020, 2021, we have three new schools that are joining PBIS. The other schools that are participating within this particular program, they're utilizing Good Standing programs and related programs. Many of our schools have school climate teams. This often is a breakout from the school improvement team. It also could be a part of the PBIS team members themselves. We have school health services that are offered to every student in the district. As you know, we have a contract with Meredith's that provides health services to all students in each school. We also have three school-based health centers in our district, South High, Western Heights Middle School, and Bestor Elementary. So, students in those schools are able to receive primary health care services, much like you would get from your personal primary care physician. And then we have staff development, a variety of development, staff development opportunities that's offered to teachers throughout the year. I'll run down through a short list of some things that we provided this past school year. We had 60 staff members that received professional development with youth mental health first aid. We had 40 staff members receive professional development with adverse childhood experiences. 60 staff members participated with Safe Talk, which is a program that's to help staff members be alert to students that might be contemplating suicide. We had a newly-developed course this past year called Creating a Culture of Learning. We had 90 staff members that participated with that over the summer. We had 344 staff members participate with crisis prevention training. We had 50 staff members that participated with Behavior Improvement Plan Development. The important part of that particular training was we began to go much broader than our special ed staff with having staff within buildings that could develop a behavior improvement plan outside of the special ed staffing. We did provide restorative practices training and circles. That included the circle training to 77 staff members this past school year. We have five administrators that are certified as restorative conference coaches, which is up from zero. And then we actually have, we trained individuals within the district to be restorative practice trainers. So, last school year, I think we had one, maybe two, individuals in the district that were a certified trainer, and now we're up to 11 after the training this past school year. So, we're very pleased with that. Some examples of Tier Two supports and interventions. We've had for many years for families and for students the supportive student support teams within our schools. These teams, they meet on a regular basis, usually involves the assistant principal, the counselor, student intervention specialist, school health staff. And they have meetings with parents and students, and they talk about how to improve student achievement, student attendance, and student behavior. For continued success with some of our students, they have a behavior support or a behavior intervention plan, which I just spoke briefly about. These plans identify the student's strengths, but they also identify for staff who's working with the students in the classroom, preventative strategies and response strategies in the event that challenged behaviors are exhibited. We have all of our schools in the district that are using a mix of restorative approaches. If you recall, last school year, the state identified that there were nine different restorative approaches that schools could utilize. So, in Washington County, our schools are using a mix of these approaches. These could include conflict resolution, mediation, peer mediation. The PBIS and Good Standing programs are part of restorative approaches. And we also have some schools that are beginning to utilize restorative conferences and circles. Our counselors and social workers are doing purposeful check-ins with students. They can provide individual counseling or individual therapy as needed. They also work with students and families on referrals to outside service providers. Student Assistance Program, every school has a trained team to work with students that are suspected to having a substance abuse concern. For the first time, in I think the district history, we trained teams at the elementary level this past school year. So, we do now have trained team members at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high. For threat assessments and safety plans, when there is a threat that occurs, there is a clear procedure that staff utilizes as they respond to that particular threat. Sometimes threats can lead to the development of a safety plan, and those are required before students re-enter the classroom. And the last Tier Two support that's on the slide here, we have school staff that helps connect students with school-based mental health services. And if those services are better delivered or provided by an outside provider, we align that. So, we have currently an MOU with three different providers in our county. There is a clear referral process that's known by our staff members, so they are aware of how to refer students for those services. Have some statistics from one particular provider that I can share this evening. One of the three providers this past school year had seen 836 students, had seen a therapist, and they had more than 5,000 sessions that were offered last year. And that's just the data from one particular provider. Tier Three supports, again, these are the most intense supports. If a student needs this level of support, we do provide this. We have Antietam Academy, which is a program in grade six through 12. Program has smaller classroom sizes. There's therapeutic supports provided on-site for students, if that's needed. And the staff members within that building are all trained on restorative practices. Our summit programs, we offer those at all levels, elementary, middle, and high. We have 17 different classrooms among 12 different schools. Elementary Behavior Support Programs, this is the, this is the new program. This will be first year for us as we welcome students back tomorrow. This particular program's in six different schools. And it includes- This particular program's in six different schools, and it includes behavior support classrooms for students in K through two and also for students in grades three through five. And within those programs, there is a behavior support teacher. There are behavior support paraprofessionals. There's a social worker at each of the six schools with the goal of getting the student back within the regular classroom setting as quickly as possible. We have therapeutic pre-K programs. We have two of those in our district that we offer. They provide students with an embedded social-emotional curriculum within their learning. We have a few other specialized programs. We have the Connections Program for students with intellectual disabilities. That's across all three levels. And we also have the Elementary Rise Program for autism support. And then the last one on the slide is the non-public placement. This is our last resort option when we do not have the resources available within our school system that a student needs in order to be successful. Those placements often go through an IEP meeting. Shifting to looking at the data from this past school year. This graph shows the types of interventions that were provided as a result of student misconduct this past school year. And starting with the upper-left corner, you can see that detentions were assigned for about one-fourth of the infractions. Parent conferences, student conferences, and warnings for another 25% roughly. Excluded from class accounted for 19%, and those are exclusions from one class period, not exclusions from the entire school day. We had about 10% that led to a day of in-school suspension. 9% led to a support referral. So that may have been a referral to a counselor, the student assistance program, the student support team, maybe an outside agency. We had 6% of the students that had a loss of privilege. 5% were suspended from school. And we had 3% of students that were removed from the bus temporarily as a result of an Looking more closely at in-school suspensions from this past school year and keeping in mind that students were in school for about two-thirds of the year. We had 753 different students that had an in-school suspension assignment, which is down from 927 the previous year. And the total number of incidents was 1,110, which is down from almost 1,500 the prior year. The major reasons that in-school suspensions were assigned this past school year were 60% of them were as a result of an assault, disrespect, disruption, or fighting. At the bottom, we noted this last year. Last year, we had 68% of the students that were assigned an in-school suspension did not commit a subsequent offense that led to ISS. This past school year, it was 72%. So the recurrence rate is very low. Out-of-school suspensions, last school year, we had 439 different students that were suspended from school. The number of incidents was 609, which is down from 806. About 53% of the out-of-school suspensions were as a result of disruption, fighting, or an assault. Again, 75% of the students that were suspended last school year did not commit an additional offense that led to an out-of-school suspension. This is, as a district and as the work of administrators, a suspension from school is always a last resort. As you can tell from the two slides previous to this one, it was utilized 5% of the time. And we still have the fifth lowest out-of-school suspension rate in Maryland compared to the other Maryland districts. At this time, I'll take any questions that you would have.
In fact, the tier one prevention, school health services, you mentioned now, I believe it was Western Heights or Bester, students can access primary care health services. Do I hear that right?
Yeah.
How do they go about that?
So the students have to enroll, the parents have to enroll with the program. They sign forms to complete the enrollment into the school-based health center. And then there is a nurse practitioner that's on-site at all three of those locations, and they can provide that level of service to the students there.
What about students at other schools? They come to these schools to enroll, not as students, but in the program?
Yeah, so the services at those three schools are specific to the students in those three buildings at this point.
Oh, okay. So they wouldn't be available to, say, a student at Springfield then? Is that what you're saying?
That would be accurate. We would, if we had a student that was attending a school that didn't have that type of a program, our school staff or the school health staff would work with the parent. If they needed a primary care physician, they would work with the parent to make sure that that was in place.
And my second question is, and then I'm finished. What happens in the summit classrooms? What's unique about the programs offered in those classrooms?
Yeah, so the students that come into the summit program have not been successful in a larger classroom environment with 20 or 25 students. Often, that's an opportunity for the school staff to work with a student in a smaller classroom setting and make sure that the behavior intervention plan is appropriate for the child and that it also is appropriate for implementation in a larger classroom setting. So they work with the student on self-management skills. They work with the student on how to manage themselves within a larger classroom setting. The students in the summit program all have an IEP, so they also look at the supports that are written within the student's IEP.
And anger management's part of that also?
Well, I don't think, we don't refer to it as anger management, but the staff certainly works with the students on managing their behavior under stressful circumstances and provides them with options that are more appropriate, that will not result in some sort of a disciplinary measure.
I only use that term because I've been out of the system as a teacher for eight years, and that was explained to me one time that way, that some of the students had anger management problems. I just, that's why I use that term.
Many of our students that are in the summit programs, they have access to therapeutic services, so they, we can connect them with social workers on-site. And they would work with the student, either the social worker or an outside service provider would work with the student, sure.
Many of our students in the summit program, we do try to push out regularly. So if a student has a six-period day, I say many of the students in the summit program, some are successful being pushed out every day in all classes, some are successful being pushed out some days, some portions of classes. We watch for certain triggers and know when to pull the students back into the summit programs. But our goal is to get them into the general education population as much as possible.
Mrs. Fisher?
You indicated that the Student Assistance Program has now been included in the elementary schools. Is that based on students who have parents that would be affecting the student's behavior, perhaps because they are using alcohol? Or are we dealing with kids K through five that are imbibing?
Yeah, so it's specific to the students and suspected substance abuse from the students. Obviously, that concern is more predominant at the high school level than it would be at an elementary level. But we wanted to make sure that if there were staff in the building that had concerns with, for example, a fifth-grade student that they suspected may have a substance abuse concern, that they had a way to report that confidentially to a trained team that could work with the child and the parent on getting the appropriate support.
Oh, my.
Mr. Casford?
Yeah. You spoke about PBIS. Could you tell me what that stands for?
Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Jacoby, I have a question regarding the elementary behavior support classrooms. You mentioned that we have those at six different schools, and we have K to two classrooms and grades three to five classrooms, each one having a teacher and a parent. So I'm wondering now, in this time of virtual learning, how those classrooms are functioning? And if they are, do we have students at this time in that type of a classroom environment?
We do have students already enrolled in those classrooms. I don't know if in all six schools and in all programs, but I asked that same question, and we do have some of those classrooms already have some students assigned.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question? Yes, Mr. Vaquum?
I have a question, Mr. Jacoby, relating to the summit program. What opportunities do children, or students in those programs, have to interact with their peers who are in the general education population?
Yeah, I think as Dr. Michael had explained, many of our students that are in the summit programs, the team that works with those students, they try to mainstream them out into general ed classes as they demonstrate the ability to be able to manage themselves. So it may initially be a push-out to a classroom that has, that the student's interested in, specifically interested in the content. But they do the push-outs a little bit at a time. If the student is experiencing success, then the student would be pushed out into the mainstream classes even more often. Did that answer the question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have another question, if I may. This doesn't have anything to do with discipline and suspension, but I'm curious to know, in this time of virtual learning, what's being done for our students with regard to social, emotional learning? Are we providing any kind of support? And if so, how are we doing that?
Yes, so our counselors have been providing lessons virtually to students in their classrooms specific to social, emotional. And we also have a process in place that if a teacher has a concern for a student, that they have a way to report that to a counselor, so that the counselor can connect to the student and with the parent and work on that particular concern.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd like to thank Mr. Jacoby and his team, our counselors and social workers and dropout prevention people, and on and on and on. I don't want to leave anybody out, so just kind of include everybody in our student service department. Been working very hard to, first of all, find our students for the sake of getting them enrolled, many of them not wanting to participate necessarily in the virtual world, but getting them involved, getting them enrolled in school, following up with them on attendance, and then also working with their social, emotional challenges that they might be having on top of their academic needs. Also, Mr. Jacoby's been navigating the attendance uncharted waters as we try to account for students on attendance. The state is very strict on how to count students for attendance, and Mr. Jacoby is kind of our key person in how that's working and how to count kids. And we follow COMAR, and we want to make sure our numbers are accurate and our percentages are correct, so I want to thank him and his team.
Thank you, Mr. Jacoby.
Thank you.
I already have a couple other items. Parents should have just received the last little bit, an update on athletics and extracurricular activities. We're trying to continue those, not only virtually, but also start back up our athletic programs on Monday, September 21st. Now, many of those will be subject to voluntary participation, quite obviously. Probably won't have every team in every sport and every school participating, but an opportunity for conditioning, some skill work, that's outlined, and that's more as well as extracurricular activities. Some of those are already occurring virtually, but we are making a mechanism available for small groups to get together to participate in extracurricular activities. So that's more should have just gone out to parents. There is some confusion about sports. We do not control the state's sports program, so people that are looking for us to start up football, or golf, or volleyball, or something in full force with other programs around the state, that is not coordinated at this time. There is a potential three-sports schedule that starts February 1st, and there's people that believe that we can control and dictate that. We cannot. I do have another meeting regarding sports on Thursday. I don't know what updates might be shared there, but parents should have the information that we have available to us at this time. Last thing I'd like to do is just thank everybody. I've been in almost all of our schools at this point. The work that I've seen from teachers, our support staff, our administrators, has been very, very well-done, in my opinion. People have done an excellent job. They've worked extremely hard. I know the virtual world is not perfect, and it is what we're working with right now. But I can't say enough about how hard our staff has worked, how proud I am of their efforts to date. Tomorrow's going to be our second first day of the new year. Obviously, the day back on August 31st was our first day, but tomorrow's our first day back with students in person, some students in person, let me qualify that. And we're very excited about that. We have a wide range in the number of students participating. Our pre-K will be our largest group throughout the county, and we're excited to see students back in our building. And again, I just want to thank staff for all their efforts. And that's all I have, Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. At this time, we'll move to Personnel Action with Dr. Pew, our Associate Superintendent for Administration and Leadership.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
As discussed earlier today in closed session, there are a number of staff changes for your review. At this time, I would ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Is there a motion?
May I accept the personnel?
Thank you. Mr. Casford, thank you for your second. The motion is to approve the personnel action as discussed earlier this afternoon. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We have six affirmative votes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Okay, and a report to the board. We have Board Member Committee reports. Is there any chair that would like to make a report? Mr. Casford?
The Facility Committee met at our new school in Scharpsburg, where we received updates on the completion of Scharpsburg Elementary and our downtown component, Bisva Barber Ingram. We'll be holding a virtual ribbon-cutting ceremonies for those schools in the future.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
Policy Committee met on August 25th. We reviewed changes to the two policies, AC and DIG, which both passed on second read earlier this evening. We also reviewed policy GBAA entitled Sexual Harassment School Employees. This policy is being held and to be reviewed again. It's tied, one of those, it's tied with some changes in the law with Title IX. We also began looking at Section J policies. Section J deals with student policies, and we are reexamining those policies for equity compliance. Our next meeting will be September 17th at 1:00 p.m.
Finance Committee has a tentative meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 27th at 9:00 a.m. in the CES Hagerstown Room.
Curriculum and Instruction will be meeting Tuesday, September 22nd, 4:00 p.m. here at the CES.
The May legislative committee had a meeting yesterday, and we see reports from all the different school districts. I'll just say this, Washington County is not alone in the problems we're facing and the situations and so forth. So there'll be another meeting, I think, what, in two weeks, I believe? Again, we meet virtually. We did get commendation.
We did get a commendation, I forget which county mentioned it. What was it? Frederick County mentioned our five-phase plan and the chart. They suggested other counties go online and look at our chart, our plan for that, the way it was presented in pictorial style and everything. So we explained that to them, and we felt very good about that.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Okay, under Miscellaneous Business, we have consideration of future agenda items. You should have a list of those items coming up in October. We have a presentation of the audited financial statements and the auditor's report on the 6th of October. Also, on the 6th of October, we'll have a report on summer learning programs and summer At our second meeting in October, we'll be talking about, have a presentation of, and a discussion about the ESSA Plan. Coming up in November, we will have a report on teacher recruitment, hiring, and new teacher And also in November, the 2019, 2020 SAT and ACT data will be reported on. So if you have anything that you would like to see on a future agenda, please let a member of the committee know. That would be Vice President Stauffer, Dr. Michael, Dr. Pew, or myself. Time for Board Member Comments. Mrs. Murray, would you like to begin?
The only thing I have to say is I wish everyone that's going back tomorrow a very successful day.
Thank you. Mr. Bickford?
I echo Ms. Murray's comments. Very, I don't know what the right adjective is, but I guess it's, hearing the numbers of people that are choosing to come back is a good thing. I think many people that can come back are choosing to come back, and I think that's good in that we'll be able to provide those services to students that need it, especially the preschool children as well as our priority populations. And again, I appreciate getting the regular updates, and the numbers still seem to be fairly good in Washington County. So we could hope that we, and I'm sure information will be coming as soon as Dr. Michael can if we plan to expand our in-person programs. And so I also wish everybody well tomorrow, and I do get some peek into how virtual learning goes every day with my wife, who teaches in Frederick County. And again, it's been two weeks in, and people are still very excited to be learning, no matter where they're learning from. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Mr. Stauffer?
Just want to dito what Mrs. Murray and Mr. Bickford said. These are tough times, but I think the staff can handle it. This board is very empathetic to what's going on in the classroom, and the staff here at CES is also. There's nothing perfect about everything that we're doing. I would just say that this is an adventure, and we don't know where all the roads lead, but we'll just have to find out as we go down this journey. Thank you.
Mrs. Fisher?
I know, we received a lot of emails from teachers who were really anxious to get back to dealing with students. And we all know that that's the best kind of teaching, is face-to-face. I wish everyone success tomorrow. I'm hoping, I know there's probably going to be a few glitches here and there, but I'm hoping it goes well, keeping my fingers crossed, and hopefully, we'll get back to full occupation of our schools before too terribly long.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Casford?
Thank you. I know I speak for all of my board members. Of all the emails that we have still received on a daily basis, we thank all of our public for submitting their comments, good and bad. It's not an easy decision when we have to do things like this, but we do make those decisions. We're thankful that we're able to move forward. I would like to say to parents, please remember, it is important for our students to not be in large groups so that we can continue to bring our students back to classes. And I'm afraid that we'll get some of our students back, and they'll want to socialize in larger groups, and we can't do that at this time. In order for us to be successful, we need your help as a parent to keep those students safe and together, in your family unit, instead of together outside with other outside families. So do your part, and we'll do our part to be successful for this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casford. Mr. Bakum?
Thank you. I wish all my fellow students who are going back tomorrow a safe day, and I also would like to echo the comments of Mr. Casford on prioritizing that groups remain in a small capacity and for students not to go out and socialize. We need everyone's contribution in order for us to return to school safely and provide the best learning environment possible.
Thank you, Mr. Bakum. Mr. Casford, Mr. Bakum, I think you've expressed very well the sentiments of all of us. So to all of you out there, whether you're a student, a teacher, paraprofessional, or a caregiver who's sitting, working with a student, we wish you the best tomorrow, and thank you for giving it your very best. Dr. Michael, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Colleagues, any final words? Okay, then we stand adjourned. Thank you.